Rules in like.
Nice.
Mm hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Very nice.
It's muted.
There you go. So we we just got it sprayed a couple of weeks ago.
Looks great.
Yeah, turn out nice.
It's a there's kind of an optical illusion because it almost looks like it's a pitched ceiling there with the 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 boards above on that forty five degree angle.
I can't get it.
Yes.
There you go.
We've got, I think we've got everybody if we can get Scott unmuted, we can get rolling. Good deal. And it's exactly six thirty. Let's uh let's get the February three twenty twenty one regular meeting of the Holland City Council called to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll? And just as a reminder to council members, please respond by saying whether you whether you're present or not, that you are present by virtual conference and where you're located. So Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Bird.
Present via virtual conference Holland, Michigan.
Peters.
Present by teleconference in Holland, Michigan.
Garcia.
Present via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Trithui.
Attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Arnsors.
Here via teleconference in Holland, Michigan.
Corbin.
Tending via teleconference from Holland.
Hookstra.
Present via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Raymond.
Lynn Raymond attending via teleconference from Holland, Michigan.
Mayor Box.
Nathan Box present and attending via teleconference from beautiful Holland, Michigan.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We are going to start the meeting as we regularly do with an opening prayer this evening by council member Mike Trithui immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I do want to do a shout out before we do that to Assistant City Manager Matt Van Dyken for bringing the flag and making sure that we have that for the the Pledge of Allegiance as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Trithui. Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you care to, please join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the city and its citizens. Is wonder, it's a wonderfully beautiful place. We pray with you, we pray that you be with all those that protect us both near and far. For all city employees, keep them safe as they go about their business on a day to day basis. Be with us tonight as we go about the deliberation and discussions of the business of the city. May we be civil and courteous to each other. Pray this in your name. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. And justice for all. Thank you, Mike, and and all of us for participating. And the next item on the agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine. They've been previously reviewed by council members and will be enacted with one motion unless a member of the audience or a member of council asks that they be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda where they will be placed in their regular order on that agenda. But prior to doing that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Four B approval of meeting minutes, January twentieth virtual regular meeting and January twenty third twenty twenty one virtual council advance. Four D city clerk claims filed against the city. Four E city clerk order review set hours for salary for twenty twenty one adopt resolution. Four F finance December financial reports. Four G management administrative services, city managers appointee on the Tulip Time Board of Directors. For H management administrative services revocable license agreement ninety and ninety two West Eighth Street projecting sign and extension of sidewalk. For I management administrative services twenty twenty city of Holland resident survey accept as information. Four J management administrative services fiscal year twenty twenty one strategic plan and business plan quarterly January twenty twenty one accept as information.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Is there any member of audience who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? You're all muted at this moment, so if there is someone, please wave your hand and let us know and Matt will get you unmuted so that you can let us know. Seeing none, is there any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented and read.
Moved by Trithui is their support.
Or.
Was that you, Dave? I'm not sure who that was.
No, it wasn't me.
Quincy.
Oh, that was Quincy. Thank you, Quincy. By Trithui, support by Bird. Sorry, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Bird.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Do we?
Yep.
Arnsors.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you, Kathy. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, we provide a period of time for members of the public to address council. We allow that in every regular meeting and during our regular meetings, we limit that time to five minutes. When we're meeting in council chambers, there are three lights in front of the dais to let you know how well you're doing on time. We do not have those here. But our Assistant City Manager Matt Van Dyken will be keeping track of the time for each one of you. And we ask that you keep it to five minutes and we are very strict about that. Also, please note that this is one way communication. This is an opportunity for you to communicate to council. We do not answer questions at this time, nor do we engage in back and forth communication at this time. So having said that, are there any members of the public who would like to address council? And if so, I please raise your hand and we'll start with Peter Bogart. And Peter, you can just wait a moment while Matt gets you on unmuted and then we'll, once you start talking, we'll start your time and please state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, are you hearing me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Peter Bogart. I live at two thirty five North Lindy Street in Zeeland. And thank you to council and mayor for giving us opportunity to speak here tonight. What I'd like to say is to the council, but I would also like the community at large to kind of hear this challenge, but what I want to say is that all hard questions are a blessing. Don't misunderstand. This isn't a defense of suffering. Hard questions are a blessing because they open the door to solutions. They put you unnoticed. Something's wrong. Something needs to be fixed. Over the course of the past year, local citizens have been coming together under the banner of the Holland Climate Collaborative to address the most difficult question in our era, climate change. HCC represents a cross section of local persons and organizations. We accept climate science, climate change is real and its trajectory is unsustainable. As Dr. Catherine Hayhoe evangelical Christian and climate scientist says, it's real, it's bad, it's getting worse, it's us. That's the something's wrong part. The good news is that Holland has already taken a positive first step toward climate mitigation with creation of the twenty twelve Community Energy Plan. The plan has achieved tangible results, witnessed the new Holland Energy Park, the Home Energy Retrofit Program, the new electric equipment policy and the purchase of renewable energy credits to offset the city's buildings' electric use. That's the needs to be fixed part. The current question, however, is whether or not the city is doing enough. Have we really addressed the hard question? Is what we're doing a solution? Science is telling us that an incremental improvement strategy will fail. We all need to pick up the pace and cut our greenhouse gas emissions by half in the next decade. If unaddressed, difficult questions fester. They don't solve themselves. We each need to be involved. It's on us. Fair enough to expect wise leadership, financial incentives and targeted programs. But start at square one. Climate change will become climate crisis if we remain silent. We, the people, need to speak clearly. This is the time to create the political will for a livable world. HCC is asking you to join us in creating the political well for Holland. To finish that Dr. Hayhoe reference, our actions can and do make a difference, so start now. How to do that? Start where you are. Address what's under your control. Drive fewer miles, walk and bicycle more. Make your next car an EV, eat low on the food chain, convert your furnace to heat pump technology, weatherize your house, purchase more efficient appliances, install solar panels. Dr. Hayhoe suggests that these personal actions account for forty percent of the solution. Obviously not enough. Sixty percent needs to come from legislation and policy. We need government to set the stage for success. We can all be our own actors, but there needs to be a stage which enables our common aspirations. In Holland, that means a serious review and updating of the CEP. We need city council to set an aggressive greenhouse gas reduction target in line with the science. We need a stronger focus on the three sectors that really make a difference. Decarbonization of power production, decarbonization of buildings and integrated mobility options. The Holland Climate Collaborative is offering resources to meet the challenge. If you want to check that out, you can go to our website at HollandClimateCollaborative.com. In the end, the issue isn't about climate change or energy policy. It's about quality of life, about a future for our children and about good being good neighbors. Quality of life is what happens when multiple things are done well simultaneously. There is no silver bullet. For example, energy efficiency makes for clean air, which makes for respiratory health, which leads to better school grades, which in turn leads to better futures. Perhaps John Muir, the Sierra Club's founding spirit said it best. When we try to pick out anything by itself, we find it hits to everything else in the universe. No one of us alone can pull this off. We need each other. Together, we can imagine and advocate for a community, for the community we want. This is the time to speak out. We can build our future by design and our children get to live here. Thank you very much. And I believe I have another colleague who wants to speak also.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? I think I see Joe Spalding. Do you have a hand up there? Is that what the the hands up for? And then I promise we'll get to the other folks as well. I'm trying to look in in as best order I can with what I've got here. So if Matt could, if you could unmute Joe Spalding.
Thank you, Matt.
And could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, so my name is Joe Spalding and I live at three oh seven Riley in Unit fifteen. I just moved back to the north side. Very interesting hearing the John Muir quote because I wasn't too far from Muir Woods. And, you know, kind of interesting character that Sierra Club's distancing from for a reason. Anyway, while I was gone for the last year, my condo went up in value like twenty four percent over the summer. There's like a really weird thing, right? That's like GameStop type stuff. So like, let's uh, let's like to look at a why those types of things are happening. I know it's not unique. My parents are the exact same boat and I'm I'm happy for them. I really am. But, you know, they're hardworking industrious Hollanders like most people here and they are preparing for retirement in the exact right way. And I don't want to say they don't need an extra hundred thousand, like seriously, there's something going on there, right? I I'm very, very happy to to see the proposed zoning changes. Those are very important. I I think it's sad to see pushback in the community. I was dismayed to learn that there was a yellow leaflet dropped across the neighborhoods telling people that we're not welcoming more neighbors in Holland. The reality is that we should allow not only more neighbors in Holland, but we should allow more more neighbors in Holland in a way with these types of ordinances that allow accessory dwelling units, no allowed duplexes and heaven forbid a triplex, quadruplex or a fiveplex where multiple families can live and you know, more neighbors. Neighbors are good. Neighbors are awesome. And neighbors are what make this place great. And, you know, frankly, a lot of the neighbors that I was friends with, that I was really close with were the things, the people, those were the things that I missed the most when I was in California. And I mean, I could tell you horror stories about where a housing shortage can go clearly from the Bay Area, but what I need to say here most is that West Michigan and everybody, everybody that's elected should know this already is growing at a rate that is unheard of in the rest of the state. In fact, for the longest time, our Grand Rapids or Kent County and Ottawa County are the only counties that were growing in the state at all. You can't add new jobs. You can't add new jobs at Perrigo and Grand Rapids. You can't add new jobs at at the the battery factories here when GMs converting every every car they're manufacturing into electric. We can't convert those new jobs. Like if there's no new homes for those folks, they're going to displace current residents. You're going to keep driving the cost of housing up. So we need these proposed zoning changes. It's not just that they're a good idea. We desperately need them and not just Holland, the entire the entire West Michigan community because we're facing a storm of a housing crisis here. And it's it's it's, you know, we have unique things about it, too. The houses falling into the lake on the on the west side of the state here. All of the real estate two miles inland has just exploded in value. And that means that more people can't live here unless we build apartments and condos and let people convert fiveplexes. That's the reality. And and the the worst parts of these, the parts that like, I mean, the worst parts of these are the homelessness situations that that will occur downstream. But the inconvenience is also, you know, existent for us here, too. Because when we, when we do get the type of overcrowding that we get when we don't have enough housing, we don't have adequate transportation. We end up having roadblocks up and down thirty one. We end up having roadblocks up and down east and west of ninety six. We end up having restaurants that can't adequately staff because their employees can't afford to live here. And then we just have closures left and right and Holland becomes a dull, boring and not valuable place in the ways that matter. So I I just really encourage everybody to celebrate these zoning changes. Look forward to having more neighbors and let's have some some increased value in in the human capital inside of inside of Holland and the people capital. We got to make sure that we 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 live up to that that potential that our that our community has. So I'm happy to be back, happy that my apartment's gone up in value, but it's still weird and I I really look forward to seeing what this this council can do in order to help solve the housing crisis because in the west side of the state, it it, you know, good luck, bad luck. It's our responsibility in the city of Holland, which is worth it. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Next, let's go to Anne Hiskis and then we can do Shanley Poole. And Matt will get you unmuted there in a moment, Anne. Anne, you should be getting a notification to unmute. You see a notification. There you go.
Thank you.
Yep. And would you, Anne, Anne, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, yes. My name is Anne Anne Hiskis and my address is two four one eight Ruth Avenue in Holland. I want to, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to give a public comment. I want to thank you also for your time and effort serving on the community, having been in service myself. I know that's a true act of love. So thank you very much. I understand that the council has prioritized a number of very important issues for their agenda of this year. And one of them is, in fact, climate change. So I want to take this opportunity to highlight some good news to encourage you and inspire you, I hope, in this important endeavor. As Peter noted, it is definitely on us to take action in our community in addressing climate change. But we now do so with powerful partners in the United States and around the globe. It is on us, but the good news is we don't do this alone. The first piece of good news I'd like to share is that, as I'm sure you know, the United States has rejoined the Paris Climate Agreement with almost two hundred partner nations restoring America's voice at the table. Shell, Exxon, the American Petroleum Institute, all support rejoining the Paris Climate Agreement because they know that addressing climate change cannot be avoided. And being part of the conversation will help the United States with international trade agreements that are important, not only to these companies, but also to Holland area industries that have a global reach. A second piece of good news concerns the federal government's Buy American Plan with a pledge to replace the government's fleet of vehicles with clean electric vehicles made by American workers supporting millions of jobs. Ford and General Motors immediately responded enthusiastically to this news, which I think is also good news for area businesses that are part of the automotive industry supply chain. In fact, GM has said that it will produce only electric cars by twenty thirty five. I think this news supports the city of Holland's plans to purchase electric vehicles for its own fleet. And it also encourages others to do so. And my third and final piece of good news concerns the science-based vision and optimism voiced by over a hundred and fifty hard-nosed corporate leaders ranging from Jeff Bezos to Bill Ford in an open letter to President Biden where they pledged support of aggressive climate goals. In their letter, they say, while the present climate crisis presents incredible challenges, it is also the greatest economic opportunity for innovation, job creation, new businesses and investment in our communities. In addition, they note, it's an opportunity to tackle economic racial and health inequality in the process. Recovering from COVID, rebuilding the economy, creating a more fair and inclusive society, combating climate change are not separate missions. They are one and the same. And these leaders conclude that this very decade, this time in history of human history is the time to confront, the only time to confront the climate crisis now, twenty twenty through twenty thirty. And the good news is that the city of Holland through its review of the Community Energy Plan and the possibility of adopting new energy goals is a great opportunity to join with leaders across the country, in other cities, and to show the world that Holland, Michigan, and I believe this in my heart, Holland, Michigan really knows what innovation and community investment is all about. So yay Holland, right? About the wonderful, it's a wonderful place and you've all done what wonderful things all along. So anyway, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Great. Thank you, Anne. Next, Matt, would you unmute Shanley Poole, please? And Shanley, would you please state your name and address for the record? If Shanley is your name, I I'm just going by the name on the screen.
Yes. Hello, my name is Shanley Poole. I'm a resident of Holland at four two three Pine Avenue. I want to thank each of you for the time and service you continually give to care for the city. And I also want to tell you about an event I attended recently. Kelvin University's lecture by Catherine Hayhoe, whom Peter Bogart also just mentioned. Catherine Hayhoe is listed as one of Christianity Today's Top Fifty Women Worth Watching, Forbes Fifty World Leaders and the United Nations Champion of the Earth in Science and Innovation. Her lecture Christians, Climate and Culture spoke about exactly what you might expect, Christians, climate and culture. But to put it more personally, she spoke directly about my faith, my environment and my community. Hayhoe asked us what we pictured when she said global warming. And so I will ask you to picture in your minds the same right now. I imagined a polar bear on a slowly shrinking iceberg. Maybe some of you did as well. Hayhoe told us that polar bears and icebergs are the most common responses that she receives, which begs the question, why fight climate change or invest in green energy in West Michigan? Catherine Hayhoe encouraged us to not let the conversation stop at polar bears and instead ask, what does this mean for our city? As a lifelong resident of Holland, I know the following statement to be true. We care deeply for our people and our community. Look no further than this weekend downtown where Holland will hold again the annual event, the Big Give, at which participating businesses give ten percent of their profits throughout Saturday to local nonprofits. Here in Holland, you can hardly throw a stone without it landing on a church's doorstep and these churches are filled with individuals dedicated to serving. Giving, serving and caring is in the history and tradition of who Holland is and who we are. So Hayhoe tells us that people in poverty or in marginalized communities are much more likely to suffer from the effects of climate change through pollution, job loss, or as we have experienced in previous summers, heat waves. Holland has increasingly faced summers with more days above ninety degrees, which may sound like a great beach day to some of us, but poses a serious health risk to others and also hurts our neighboring farming communities. A second virtue of West Michigan I know to be true is this. We are leaders and as Anne Hiskis also said, we are innovators. We put ourselves at the forefront of solutions, like when Holland responded on the offense to rising temperatures by providing cooling centers to those who don't have access to air conditioning. I believe Holland can be on the offense and on the defense as we provide cleaner solutions to care long term for the city and community we have cultivated here in West Michigan. As you continue to make decisions that care for our city and our people, I ask council to include green energy at the forefront of these decisions. These are sustainable solutions that offer sustainable care for our city. Thank you once again for your leadership in Holland and for this opportunity to speak to you all.
Great. Thank you, Shanley. Matt, I see there's a Carrie. They don't have their their camera on, but I think I see a hand up. So if there's a Carrie that would like to speak to council at this time, we can get you unmuted. And you should be getting a notification to unmute. Great. Yep, you're unmuted. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, this is Izzy Israel Kipania, one two eight three one Sapphire Parkway, Holland, Michigan. How are we doing this evening, gentlemen? Hope you're all doing well. I come on here not under, I don't have an account on this, so she put in her name. So I'm not trying to run her an alias. But I've had some issues with this community. I grew up here. I've lived here all my life. I went to St. Francis and graduated out of Zeeland. I mean, I've lived in Ottawa County my entire life. So, you know, I tell people for a joke that you put a van in front of my name because I'm pretty Dutch. But long story short, I called many of you, I pointed out many of you, I've emailed many of you. And I've had some issues from the time I purchased Reliable Sports when I moved in. I've been falling on deaf ears. And I really think it's just time for this community, at least call me in, sit down as a professional and explain your situation. But via via phone calls and this, this and that. And there's a lot of evidence and a lot of things that I can say, but there's, this isn't really for the general public. So I'm just reaching out to say that I am looking for your guys' attention so that we can sit down and figure out what is the proper way moving forward. There's some allegations coming down from an attorney out of New York you guys know about now. I'm in conversations with them. So at the end of the day, I love the city of Holland and I don't want to go anywhere when I'm at the point where I'm living in fear in my own home because of certain people that are even watching right now. They've had some big influence and putting me in a very awkward position. Again, I repeat, I'm not going to. Again, I repeat, I'm not going to hang out the laundry here. You guys know how to get hold of me. Please reach out to me. God bless. Everyone have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And the next item that we have on our agenda is item number seven, special order of the day. Uh, public hearing, Community and Neighborhood Services, CDBG-CV Supplemental Funds. For the CDBG 2019-2020 Annual Plan Amendment. Mr. Van Beek, and yes, I got through all of those. I see you laughing over there, Mike.
There's a lot of those. I'm not going to give a long introduction because I think this is probably like the, I don't know, the fifth or sixth time that we've gone through a version of this. Uh, because of an exciting second round of additional funding of, um, through our CDBG. And Mark Cornelius has done a fantastic job of presenting this before. And I'm sure he'll do a fantastic job of presenting it again tonight in preparation for the public hearing. So. Mark, welcome and thank you.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for creating some time for this this evening. Uh, Matt, there are a couple of slides. They're not important. I can talk through them if they're not readily accessible. But basically, um, if you recall, I think I was back before you, as, as Keith just said, back in June, when we received. The first round of funding from, from HUD, which was supplemental. Community Development Block Grant Funding to help communities such as Holland, all communities across the, across the country respond to COVID. And, um, so in June, we, we, you, you all agreed on a plan to dispense about 90% of the funds that we received to three. Organizations. And as expected, uh, we've received a second round of funding, approximately the same amount. This time it's 198,586. And, um. We, uh, we, we followed a similar process to determine what was the best use of those funds. In essence, we. Uh, we certainly made aware within the community that these funds were available to agencies that were serving the citizens of Holland and responding to COVID needs. Um, we, we created a request for proposals process where we invited particular agencies to submit proposals. For how they would utilize funds if they were received. And then we formed a, an ad hoc work group. To review, uh, four proposals that were received and we, uh, that committee, which consisted of a couple of members of the Neighborhood Improvement Committee and a couple of staff members. Uh, we selected three organizations to, to recommend funding for, and we created a slate of recommendations for the amount of, of funding for each. Um, just incidentally, the fourth organization that was not recommended for funding. Um, certainly a good organization doing good work in the city, but the way that they determine eligibility for their clientele. And this was a food assistance organization. They did not gather the type of documentation that CDBG would like to see if they came in and audited our records. So. And they understood that. So that was a, that was a, you know, an understandable decision on their part, on our part. Um. So I guess the last little point before we talk about the, the, the slate of funding that we're recommending tonight. Is that in the first round, we held back a portion of the funding to pay for administrative costs. And we've determined that we don't need to do that with the second round. So the recommendation before you tonight is that we distribute all of the 198. Uh, 586 to the same three organizations that were recipients in the first round. So those are before you now. Um, Good Samaritan Ministries, uh, we're recommending $63,000 to do essentially what they've been doing with the current round of funding. Um, as you can well imagine, they are, um, receiving an onslaught of need. And requests for assistance for folks that are facing, um, either eviction or just, just behind substantially on rent. Uh, resilience is the, the new name for the Center for Women in Transition. We're recommending 40,586 to, to that organization. For some increased shelter costs that they're experiencing, along with the option of using some of the funding to, to rehouse some of their clientele. And then finally, $95,000 is being recommended to Community Action House for, um, emergency food distribution. And I think that. Covers what I wanted to cover, but I'm certainly available for, for any, any questions.
Any questions from council to Mark? All right, seeing none, I think, yes, Quincy, right here. Can you go back to that last slide?
Okay, um, so from these three, so earlier, Mark, you, you spoke about, um. This being used to help with COVID, right?
Correct, yep.
All right, so I guess my question is kind of, um, from these three organizations here. Are those numbers? More than because of COVID? Are we looking to give more money based off of COVID on these organizations?
This, this funding and the round one funding is exclusively for COVID response. So when they submitted a proposal. They made an argument essentially based on, on the increased need that they're seeing or increased costs that they're experiencing. They made a, a case or an argument for why. Uh, what the amount of funding they, they could use or could benefit from, um, to directly respond to whatever their increased costs were. Again, directly tied back to, to COVID. I don't know if that answers your question, but that was the.
I wanted to know.
Funds are.
Another question, I guess. What kind of a percentage increase from these amounts did we see from last year? I don't know if you would have that right offhand or not.
Well, with, with our traditional CDBG funding, we didn't, we did not fund any of these three organizations.
Okay.
Oh. Now that we are beginning to fund Community Action House and Good Samaritan Ministries with our traditional funding, but that's new this year and it's. It's a relatively small amount, $12,500 for each. Um, has to do with, there's, you know, we're, we're very limited in the amount of public service funding we can. We can use from the CDBG funding source, but, uh, they allowed us an exception. With the supplemental funds, we could use all of it for public services if we chose to.
Okay, what you, you said, leads me to another question. You said that there's a percentage or a cap on any other year outside of this year. What is, what is that?
15% of our, of our normal annual allocation may be spent on public services or human services, social services, those sorts of, of, of. Services that meet human needs.
Okay, thank you. I am, I'm really glad to see these organizations, um, being able to, we're able to help them. So, um, that's a big deal for me. So, pretty happy about that.
Keith, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, and I think this is clear, but just to make sure, um, for Quincy and everyone else listening. The traditional, um, CDBG funds that we have every year, um, is not impacted in any way negatively by this. We continue to have those programs in place also. So this is specific COVID funding above and beyond that. And Mark also on behalf of the city continues to be the coordinator of all of those traditional funds. Um, and I don't know when we approved that most recently, um, Mark. Uh, but that continues to be something that we look at and submit that multi-year plan and then year-to-year plan. So. Um, just in case, just to, you know, really drive that point home, all of those traditional funds that we use that for. Fant, you know, lots of good purposes throughout the city, including sidewalks and, and the like, that continues, um, in addition to this funding.
All right, any other questions from council? Seeing none, I will open a public hearing on this matter. Uh, is there any member of the public who would like to speak in regard to this particular agenda item? Uh, if so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, and what is the pleasure of council in regard to this matter?
Move we approve.
Moved by Bird, is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithui?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Next item on the agenda, oh yeah, sorry, thank you, thank you, Mark, appreciate.
Yep, thank you, everybody.
Uh, next item on the agenda is written petitions and communications, e-commerce. We have, uh, we have set up a special email address, publiccomment@cityofholland.com to provide the, uh, the community the opportunity. Uh, to communicate with council. Uh, not everybody can log into a meeting, not everybody can attend a meeting when we're meeting in public. Uh, we wanted folks to give, have the opportunity to be able to get, uh, email communications to council. Uh, we accumulate those over the course of the two weeks between our regular meetings. Uh, council does read each and every one of those, uh, and then we accept them into the record, uh, at our regular meetings. We do not read them out loud into the record, we just accept them en masse into the record. Uh, and so I would entertain a motion from council, uh, to accept those e-commerce.
Move that we accept the e-commerce for the meeting of February 3rd.
Support. Move, move by Aaron Sors, support by Trithui, is there any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithui?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, next item is item 12C1, Resolution to Sell Merchandise on Sidewalk Downtown Development. Uh, Mr. Van Beek, I'm going to pass this one to you.
Yes, thank you. And, and council, mayor, council members, sorry if maybe some of you that did your homework early on this say, hey, I don't remember this being on here. This was a relatively recent ad, uh, so we'll go a little bit slow here, although I think this is probab, I think it's a straightforward matter. Um, but I'm going to ask Matt Vindiken to just give a brief overview of this item. And then Ron's also in the background that, um, you know, can explain any legal questions that you might have. So. Matt, just explain the context and why we're recommending this, please.
Yeah, so, uh, if you remember about a month or so ago, you actually, uh, approved extending the sidewalk cafes in the downtown to go year-round. Allow people to eat outside of this, uh, what this accomplishes is, should you, uh, resolve to do it tonight. It would allow restaurants to move out into the parking spaces again, just like we did last summer. And it would allow our retail vendors to move some merchandise out onto the sidewalk only. So the, the retailers would be limited to the sidewalk areas. Obviously, they would have to get a permit through the DDA. Uh, and then just like we did last year for the retail and for the restaurants, we would be inspecting those, making sure they're safe. Making sure we've got a significant enough barrier to allow people to be outside, uh, safely eating. Um, as you all know, it's February 3, which means our restaurants have now been back open at 25% capacity for a couple of days. Um. You know, I, I'm hopeful that, uh, we're all in safely go back to eating inside at 100% in the very near future. Um, but I don't know that that's going to be the case. And this is one thing that the, the DDA felt that we could do again this year. Uh, to allow people to eat outside safely and allow those restaurants to be able to generate, um, some more revenue. So that's the, uh, that's the gist of the resolution that's before you. Uh, one thing, this would take effect immediately. And be valid through December 31 of 2021, and then we could revisit it again.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt? Yeah, Mike.
You saw me this time.
I did.
This is kind of sort of pertaining to this, Matt, but it's a general question I should have asked a long time ago with the new. Direction that the governor put out a couple of weeks ago with the shelters or the four sides. I know that we have an ordinance against it. Does that overrule the ordinance?
No, Mike, and I think really what, um. So let me answer this, that, that does not rule, overrule that, that I'm aware of. Um, when we talk about shelters, especially in the downtown, um. Space, you know, you've, you've seen people put ice shanties out and they've built igloos and they've built things like that. Um, really, we, we haven't told anyone no per se. Um, to do that, but there is a checklist of things that they have to go through that the Fire Marshal has put out. And there's been a consortium of Southwest Michigan Fire Marshals that have given the guidelines that it would take to do that safely. And so far, no one has, um, chosen to take that up, uh, in our downtown area.
Okay, I remember the discussion. I remember, you know, the, the rules and regulations that they have to go through, but I just didn't know if. The fact that now this is one of the, uh, options that she's put out there. If we've had any pushback, if we've had any questions, anything like that. So. There's some tight spots down there. I'm, I'm all. For the, uh, you know, getting as much business as we can down there to the restaurants and what have you, but, um, but. This is also a walk of a community and, um, we're crowding in a couple of spots down there. So, thanks.
Keith?
So Matt, I, this has nothing to do with the action that's before you tonight, but Matt, since we're kind of talking about it and Mike asked a very pertinent question right now. You might as well let him know, do we think that there might be another request that's coming forward to council? That we're going to have to talk about here in the next little bit? We might as well put it on everyone's radar.
Sure, we, we, we do. There's been quite a bit of discussion at the DDA and the PSD level, but Roel has probably heard this about the social districts. Um, so social districts allows for people to have an open container of alcohol. Outside in a public space, I know, right now that's not allowed. And I can already see Mike's face even though he's way back in there. Um, but I would expect a recommendation to come from both the PSD and the DDA board recommending social districts. Um, as another way to really help our bars and downtown restaurants, um, increase their sales. So more to come on that, but we'll kind of consider that the shot, the warning shot fired across Mike's bow, I think. Um, I'm kind of glad we're not meeting in person, Mike. Um, but no, that, that's something that really does need to, uh, be discussed more at the PSD and the DDA level, but. We did do a survey of the downtown merchants. Uh, it has gotten a lot of support, so I would expect a, a recommendation officially to be coming back to you soon.
Thanks, Matt. And again, that's not before you tonight, but it seemed like a, as an appropriate time as ever to let you know that those are in discussions and. I wouldn't be surprised if that lands before you at some point.
All right, any other questions in regard to the issue that's actually in front of us? Seeing none, I will, uh, entertain a motion from council. Quiet group tonight.
Motion to adopt the resolution presented.
Yes, can you get that? Yes, moved by, moved by Garcia, and I believe I heard Mr. Trithui with support. Was that correct, Mike? Yep, all right, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trithui?
Yes.
Aaron Sors? Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, next item is, uh, item 12E2.1 Recycling Cart Program Fee. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, uh, thank you, mayor and council. Um, this has also been a subject that's been before you many times and, and, um, still progressing along very well. As far as the new recycling cart program, uh, that you approved and will be rolling out here soon. I just made a pun, didn't I? I didn't intend to do that. Um, what, what we do have before you tonight, though, is that, um. This isn't new information and that we knew, um, that when we took that action, that it did reflect, um, a price increase that would go into effect. Um, and at that point, we had. Um, and at that point, we had, um, made any changes to the actual fees, um, but this recommendation talks about how to, um, you know, move in that, uh, price increase, um, where it is $2 a month per resident, and the recommendation here is, um, to pass along just $1 per month per resident effective July 1, and that the, um, fund balance that we have in place could cover the rest of that. Lynn and Mark are probably gonna look at me and like, thanks, Keith, just kind of made the presentation instead of handing it off to us. Uh, but those are the two that really did a lot of work on this, and I guess I'm kind of took their credit or, or took their thunder, but Lynn, Mark, thanks for being here tonight, what did I miss and what else would you like me to share, if anything?
I, I think that you, uh, hit the, hit the salient points, Keith. Um, yeah, just that, uh, we, we had not included, uh, uh, this fee in the last go around when the fee schedule came to you in December, because we, we didn't exactly know then, you know, when the carts were gonna roll out and, and when we're gonna start picking them up and all that stuff, but, you know, we got clarity on all of that now, so, um, the carts will be hitting the streets distributed, I think, effective, or starting the week of April 12. Um, so that, that will occur then, it's probably gonna take five, six, seven days to roll them out, and we're anticipating that Republic will start, um, picking up the carts then, recycling carts, the first full week of May. So that's kind of exciting, so, um, yeah. So this, uh, uh, city council then would be, I mean, the recommendation is to have, uh, folks just pay $1 for the first year, actually, we're paying, the city'd be paying the full freight for two months of this fiscal year yet, and then, uh, residents would be picking up one buck for the first year and then kind of, uh, rolling into paying for the full, the full price of it, uh, effective July 1 of 22, so.
And just one other thing, um, just as a reminder, there will, we will, uh, also be covering the cost of the carts themselves. You're able to get grants for the majority of that funding, and then the city will cover the remainder cost of that as well, but there will be no charge to the residents for the carts.
Great, thank you. Dave, I think you've got a question?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you for the clarification, um, Lynn and Mark. Um, just wanted people to, um, know and remember that the cost of the carts was paid for by grants. What's, question I have, uh, that's rolling around in my head a little bit, as I recall in the past, there was, um, I don't want to call it a kickback, but, um, a payment to the city, uh, at one point, um, that was sort of a rebate or whatever from the, um, revenue from the recyclable sales. And, um, I can't exactly remember the, what the number was, it was no drop in the, small drop in the bucket. But can you tell me if we're still receiving or the payment for the, for the ref- refuse company? Well, based on their recyclable sales, what that is, and how, if any, in any way, that might affect the cost to residents for the recycling program?
Yeah, so I want to say, I don't have the contract right in front of me, Dave, but I, I'm fairly confident in saying that yes, uh, Republic, um, is on the hook for paying us, um, you know, a certain amount for, uh, those recycling fees, and I, I, yeah, I, I don't know if those payments have occurred and, and how much they might be and so forth, that's, I don't know if Lynn would have that information either, but I'm, I'm fairly certain that is in the contract.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that information right now either, I can definitely look that up and get that back to you.
Yeah, it would bear looking into, I think, as I recall, it was kind of a moving target based on what the market was for recyclable materials, and that moved quite a bit, but, um, just a thought, you know, if, I don't know what we've done in the past with that, with those revenues, but perhaps if we do in fact get those, that could be applied to the cost of the, it wouldn't be great if it was a zero sum cost for the recycling program?
Well, that's exactly right, David, and the money goes back into the solid waste fund, uh, to help offset the cost of the carts and, and everything else like that, so it is going back in. One of the goals is to increase the recycling, so we can increase that revenue to even make it more to your sum of, of zero sum goal. Um, so yeah, it is getting rolled back into the, it, it would be nice to know what the, what the revenue is, Mark and Lynn, if we could get that information, but that's, that's where that money goes back into the solid waste fund.
Yes, you're exactly right, Mike, so we'll get that, we'll get that information out to council. Um, but yes, just to perfectly clarify, so everyone knows, that's, that's where government accounting and enterprise funds and all those types of things comes in place. So the reason that there is some money available that we're saying that the city is gonna pick up those additional two months, and we're gonna ease the transition into that additional cost, the reason that that money is there is because there has been a, there is a fund balance in that, um, account. So Dave, what you're saying basically is, um, residents are benefiting from those sales back because that is the money that we're utilizing to not pass on the full cost to residents even at this point.
My point is, wouldn't it be great if they could realize an even greater savings if that were possible? Not saying it is, but something to think about.
A- a- and the encouragement that I think Mike said, and, and, um, I'll, I'll make it not even so subtly, is that residents, if everybody recycles at a great rate and follows the rules, so it's clean and follows the, the rules and generates a lot of recycling material, then over time, then we'll have more sales that will come back to us, and it will achieve exactly what you're talking about, Dave, so, um, preach, preach the good word.
Appreciate.
Well done, sir.
Great. Yes, Jay?
I think we got about 90 days before this thing rolls out, and, uh, just doing my own little talking to, to folks, uh, this, there's a lot of misunderstanding about when you throw it in the tub, are you recycling, like, your kind's catch-up plastic bottle is empty. Just throw it in the tub, is that good or bad? When I buy, when I empty a can of kidney beans making chili, some cans of kidney beans, the label, you scrape, it comes right off, it's really easy. Some of them, it's like peeling, it's like, nah, uh, you, you try for a minute and get tired of it, you just, you throw it in there anyway, bud, you can't get the label off. I, I just wonder if, that, we talked about an educational thing, if you want to achieve the things we want, I, I'm, I'm of the belief that there's a lot of people who aren't quite sure about what this clean recycling means, what's it, what is incumbent on them to do the kinds of things we want them to, and some kind of a creative educational piece over the next 90 days will help our, uh, our efforts immensely.
Yeah, so Mark can, can hit that, but, but even there, thanks, Jay, cuz, cuz you, uh, you tell the story about the kidney beans and the chili every time, so you're helping us with education right there. But, uh, but mayor,
Welcome.
Mayor, you were standing in front of a certain green screen and, and had a recycling cart in front of you recently, so maybe you've, you even can talk about the education plan that's, uh, being put in place and will be rolled out soon, and then Mark probably has more of the details that I don't.
I, I think I was, I was just the talent in regard to that education portion, we did, there were, we did a photo shoot with the, with the containers, uh, for, I believe flyers that are gonna be going out and other, other communication items. There's also gonna be, there's also gonna be information that's gonna be printed directly on the containers as well as QR codes, and I'm sure Mark can fill in more detail on exactly what's going on with the, the actual education piece, but they've already started, my understanding is, putting that, those materials together.
Yes, indeed they have, so, um, we are working right now, getting information to Cascade Engineering, who is, uh, gonna be, uh, producing the carts, so we're, we're working on, uh, hot stamps, in-mold labels and stuff, so the in-mold label will go on the top of the can, and it's gonna be, you know, you know, pictures and stuff, but really simple messaging for folks as to, uh, what is acceptable to a recycle and that it needs to be, uh, cleaned out, should be dried if at all possible. Uh, we got, we're gonna have the website on that, and we're gonna have a QR code, and, uh, so it's, 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 it's all gonna be wrapped in there, so, but we're, in March, uh, the mayor is gonna be, uh, front and center on a, on a carts are coming, uh, postcard that's gonna be going out, and I believe, uh, we, we photographed another individual also, and I, I forget her name. Um, but those are gonna be going out as just kind of a, uh, introduction to all of the account holders that this change is coming and that they're gonna be getting carts and delivered to them in April. Uh, when the carts do roll out, we're gonna have an informational bag that goes in there. Um, here again, it's gonna have some FAQs in it, it's gonna have some maps in there about, you know, when they are to roll their cart out, because the carts, again, are only gonna be collected, um, every other week. So we're gonna have the city kind of divided into A and B zones, so each, each day of the week, um, you know, so the Monday zone will have an A and a B, and the Tuesday will have an A and a B, and you gotta switch off and stuff, so. But we're gonna try to make that is, is, uh, simple and, uh, easy to understand as possible with, uh, with that handout material, we're look, working on having kind of an interactive, uh, map. Our GIS person is working on that, so we're, we're on it as far as marketing, and that's just kind of the initial rollout um, of information. Um, we also have in the pipeline kind of follow-up information then too, so we're gonna be, I think for the remainder of this calendar year, and it might, it might even be going out, uh, longer than that, um, we're gonna have information going out to folks, so just kind of repeated messaging about how, you know, how they're to clean things, Jay, and, uh, and, and how they're supposed to do it again, so just the repetition, we gotta hit them a number of times, and then it will hopefully become kind of habit forming, and everybody, everybody will have clean, uh, kidney bean cans, so. Um, at least that's the goal.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're,
Thank you.
We're on it, yep.
Mike?
Yeah, Jay, along with that, and for everybody else, along with that, one of our partners, uh, and part of our grant money was specifically toward the educational component of things, so. Um, Mark is exactly right, that's going to be, um, going to be rolling out, and I'm glad to hear the mayor is the, uh, the face of this, because I was the other candidate, so. They must have gone for the younger, better-looking. But anyway, no, I'm, I'm excited about this coming out. Um, you've got a great point, Jay, and, um, education is coming, so.
I just want to say, say for the record, Mr. Mayor, and because Dave didn't like my point, Mike just made one too, he said the program is rolling out, so just,
Subtle.
Subtle, yes. Nikki?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I'm glad to hear that it's, uh, the marketing is in a non-digital format also, because I will get a couple phone calls from people who just don't have computers and are just not, um, online with this, with QR codes and whatnot, so that's nice that you're hitting all the publicity bases that way.
Yeah, yeah, we, I mean, so we, we looked at many other benchmark communities too, and a lot of folks, you know, are just kind of relying on digital stuff, you know, like, hey, scan this with your smartphone and that will take care of everything, and we're like, uh, no, we're gonna have lots of people call up.
Uh, you know, everybody.
Yeah, we don't have that technology, help us. Um, yeah, so we're, we're, we're kind of gaming that, and hopefully we'll have a little something for everybody.
And did you also say you had an option for maybe the singleton, uh, who doesn't accumulate much trash or recycling? Um, and you have these 96-gallon barrels?
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're rolling out with the cans for every account. And really kind of the goal is, we, we hope that, uh, people will, will grow accustomed to them, and then, you know, figure out that, hey, this is not that bad after all. Um, you know, if, if after six months or, or a year goes by and it just becomes untenable, um, you know, I think, uh, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the materials management, you know, task force was thinking, well, perhaps we can look at something in the future or make a recommendation for something in the future, but for, for the time being, I think we're like going, nah, we get, really gotta roll the carts, and that is kind of the industry standard for for doing this.
Of course, and it's clean and dry, it doesn't have to be taken out every two weeks either.
Yeah, I mean, people can, can sit on it for a month if they want, um, and just rolling out, rolling out when it's full, so.
Oh, this is open-ended, Nikki, it's, it's, um, we, we needed to have a starting place, we needed to have a benchmark. Um, we're not the only ones, this is not the first community to do this, so we've, we've looked at, and I hear a lot about, you gotta read the science, you gotta listen to the science, well, we've listened to the science in this particular case, and that's what they've done, and if it turns out, like I've said before, that we need to, um, potentially offer something a little bit less, then we'll look at that, but we have to have a benchmark, we have to start it, and I think Mark's right, people are gonna see, okay, I wasn't able to put my cardboard in the plastic bags and stuff, I can put everything in here.
Right.
And if it lasts for, you know, you don't have to put it out every, every other week, put it out once a month, whatever, whatever the case may be, but that's, that's the thought behind it, so yeah, we are definitely going to be looking at that.
And, and my understanding was, one of the requirements of the, of the grants for the carts was that they all be 96-gallon carts, as well as that, that was part of it. Yeah, Jay, and then, and then Quincy?
Uh, along with the mayor, um, talking about this and being the face of it, I'm wondering if there's a, a Spanish, uh, counterpart, I'm assuming all this information is going out in two languages.
Uh, yes, well, I, I can't.
And the other representative is a minority representative.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So Jay, uh, a lot of this information, I, so Mary Ann would prob, Mary Ann Maynorfield will probably know right off the top of her head, but I want to say the lion's share of this information is going to be bilingual. Um, because we know we have a, a substantial, uh, population base that, that, uh, would be, you know, would benefit from having that, so. So yes, we are gonna be having that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Quincy?
Um, just speaking about the, um, people needing, um, smaller containers after using them for a while, and, and then say they need to switch. Um, a big point on the, um, education, to be able to communicate that kind of information as well. Don't know if you already have done that, I'm assuming you have, but I just wanted to bring that up as well.
Yeah, I, I get it, and I know that, I don't think we want to communicate that we're going to change it, I think we're, we're, we're communicating that this is the plan, and then we'll reevaluate at that point, I think if we communicate like, um, hey, assume that you can switch it after six months.
Oh, dear.
Um, I don't, I don't think we quite want to do that, but I think also the material, you know, task force, like Mike explained, um, is open to kind of saying, let's, let's see what it's like underneath our belt, and then if we need to re-evaluate, then they'll take a look at that and make a recommendation to everybody.
Okay.
So, so, I, I was just gonna add, so included in this too is a, um, a backyard kind of pickup option, and so, you know, think of, uh, think of like a very elderly person who cannot get, you know, kind of manhandle a big, huge 95-gallon tubber out to the street. Um, so Republic does have a program where their, their folks will go to the rear yards and, uh, pick up the cans, they do that right now with refuse. Um, so that will be a part of the program too, if, if somebody needs to do that, so. Um, they just need to be intentional and, and, and let Republic let us know that that's what they want, or that's what they need once the program gets rolling.
Great, any other questions for staff? All right, I will entertain a motion in regard to the recommendation from staff.
Motion to adopt the recommendation to approve the $1 per month for the first year of the program, starting July 1, 2021, and then rolling out the second dollar after the second fiscal year, starting in July 1 of 2022.
And, all right, do we, got a motion, do we have support?
Support.
Uh, moved by Trithui, support by Aaron's Horst, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Aaron's Horst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trethuie?
Yes.
Airbox?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Kathy. Next item is 12E 6.1 gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The City Manager's Office is pleased to report the following gifts: Public Safety Services Honor Guard and K-9 Unit in honor of Burton Boar, Lester Hoagland $100, Dr. Dale and Connie Mead $25, Brad and Mimi Boar $200, Brian and Jane Boar $200. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Motion to accept with appreciation.
Moved by Trethuie. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Did you say Hookstra?
Yes, Hookstra.
Yes, yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trethuie?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Airbox?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Next item, item number 13, communications from the city manager. I've got a clock on my computer. I know he has one, too. We'll leave it at that.
Yes, I won't take a long time tonight, Mayor and Council, but in a moment, I am going to ask Matt Van Dyken to share something with you all. Just in advance of that, I'll just let you know, extremely busy at City Hall and throughout the city, through the city right now. For some of you, when we were signing on, we were joking a little bit with our new Finance Director, Lynn McCammon. She's not wearing red today, but it's kind of the humorous thing among staff right now, because red folders is what causes fear and trepidation amongst all the departments, because the red folders is when we're in the midst of budget times, and it really doesn't cause any fear. But it is a humongous amount of work. And it seemed like every time that Lynn was on a call, where were we talking about that? She magically was wearing something red. So we were always joking about that. But very busy at City Hall and extended right now. But a good sign, because that means, yeah, there's a lot of things happening. You know, looking back at Advance, certainly had a lot of things that were communicated to us, which is great. It drives what we're doing now in these coming months. And Matt, just when he was reflecting, I think it was the next morning or something, he just described something that I thought was helpful, and you all like to hear Matt talk rather than me. So Matt, why don't you share your perspective?
Sure. Thanks, Keith. So I just came up with kind of an analogy on what we all do, right? And we have all these things that are going on. And that analogy actually involves the end of a game of pool. Who, an old friend of mine who was already old, and I was young, always told me, a good pool player is a sign of a bad upbringing. But that has nothing to do with the analogy. So the analogy I have is, is our jobs are a lot like the end of a game of pool, when all the balls are still on the table, and there's only a few that have been sunk. We take a cue, and we start moving those balls, and you just keep moving the balls and keep them going. Maybe one gets fired in the pocket. But as you keep those balls moving, suddenly they start getting to pockets, and they start to drop. And our job is making sure that all the balls are moving down to the end of the table or to a pocket so they can drop. You know, when we have all these things that we do, there are so many things that are going on, sometimes we can't always focus on completely on one. And, you know, there were 40 goals that you set had as council, but I had on that sheet of paper. So our job is to really, just like at the end of the game of pool, when there's still balls on the table, is keep all those balls moving, so that eventually they start to drop, and we start to accomplish all the goals that you have. And yes, Mr. Mayor, I am pretty good.
Thank you for doing that.
So who knows what that says about his misspent youth, apparently?
I'm glad you said it, Keith, and not me.
We needed.
Burning cows or anything like that.
Yeah. So just so you know, right, there were a handful of things specifically at the end of the Advance that we talked about, like, okay, we're going to get working on those. Two of those, remember, are kind of in an otherwise process. So the SDT is working very diligently meets every other week, which doesn't even reflect the amount of other work that they're doing on the Community Energy Plan. So when they're done with that work, that will come to you in normal course to council. The Udo is very much being discussed at the Planning Commission level. So that will also come to you through that process. And then there were four, I won't go into great detail, but there were four other items. Broadband. And just so you know, we're looking to, when we do that presentation to you, we'll also try to do that as a joint session. So we'll also have the BPW Board join you when we have that session. So just everyone hears that information at the same time. And then there was kind of what's going on with Esther and Jen on various DEI initiatives. We had a north downtown kind of planning review and update, and housing especially, kind of not only countywide, but then working down to us. So all of those things are in process, that ball moving that Matt talked about, not only in grand scale, but also putting together the plans to schedule those all to come before you. I'm going to tell you, I'm not sure that we're going to pull it off where we're going to have one of those ready for you next week at study session or not. I can't tell you that right now. There's one in particular that has a possibility. But also, we'll get them, if it doesn't start next week, it'll start right after that, and we'll line them up and knock them out for you. But just with all the coordination going on, just to give you a heads up on that. So by Friday, we'll obviously have to make a final call on that. So those are the things, just to give you an update and let you know kind of that we're moving forward. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor and Council.
All right. Thank you, Keith. Next item is number 14, appointments and communications from the mayor. I have a proclamation, and then I've got one announcement that is kind of a follow-up on it, actually. The proclamation is to declare February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of Holland. Whereas Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, is an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and a time of recognizing their central role in US history and culture. And whereas the event grew out of Negro History Week, the brainchild of noted historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African-Americans. And whereas since 1976, every US president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. And whereas with the 2021 National Theme for the Observants, the Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity, we recognize that the Black family has been stereotyped and vilified from the days of slavery to today, and that the Black family offers a rich tapestry of images for exploring the African-American past and present. And whereas the events of this past year, including the Black Lives Matter and other protests for racial equity across our city, state, and country, call our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas during the Great Migration from 1916 to 1970, America saw 6 million African-Americans leave rural southern United States and head north, many of them settling in Detroit and other Michigan cities. They brought with them the desire for economic opportunities, freedom from oppression and harassment, and freedom to create their own lives. These men, women, and children played an important role in settling the state of Michigan, as well as the rest of the United States. And whereas the City of Holland continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community, in which all residents are respected and recognized for their past, present, and future contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. Now, therefore, in recognition of African-Americans, past and present, in our community, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, proclaim the month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of Holland. And I urge all residents to participate in activities that celebrate our Black brothers and sisters' heritage and culture. As a city, we continue our efforts to create a just, peaceful, and prosperous community for all peoples, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland this third day of February 2021. And as a follow-up to that, I had someone ask me a question today. How might I learn about more of what the African-American community has done in the City of Holland and the history that there is in this community? And Keith Van Beek and I had an opportunity today to visit the newly reopened north branch of the Herrick District Library. And the first thought that entered my head when I was asked that question is, I don't know, but I bet they know at the library. And so for anybody who's interested in learning that, I know that our wonderful staff at the Herrick District Library would love to be able to help them out with any research that they might want to do. And I want to encourage members of the community to go and to visit that north branch. It is spectacular. It is well-thought-out. It is beautiful. It is incredibly functional. And they even have an incredible divider wall that lowers from the ceiling that Matt Van Dyken and Chris Hart are definitely going to want to see in regard to the Civic Center. It is a fantastic facility and a great asset for this community. So I encourage everybody not only to visit the main branch here right across the street from City Hall, but also the north side branch on Riley is brand-new and beautiful. We love it. And that's all I have. Next item is appointments, motions, and communications from city council members. And Nikki, you told me you had something.
Yeah, I just always like to update you on the strategic development team progress or status quo. So we met, the group met Monday, this last Monday, so via Zoom, of course, and there's nothing concrete, really, to report. We went over the last meeting's presentation, which I urge you to watch, on carbon offsets and renewable energy credits, which the city uses, actually. City and BPW use to power the City Hall. We need to market that a little bit more. So we went over where these types of carbon reduction measurements and tools can be used and different categories where we can put them. We mentioned possible legislative changes over the horizon. Joe Sigma from Outdoor Discovery Center presented a chart of cities comparable to Holland in their respective energy usage, benchmarking comparisons over different categories, age, population, renewable energy use, so we can look at it and learn and not reinvent the wheel in every category. The next meeting will cover education portions of carbon reduction and energy use. And then we'll move on to building refits and transportation, keeping in mind, as we plan, you know, what we can really do and what is out of our purview, either because of mandates or legislation or whatever. So I hope, and then we're going to work on, we'll look at building refits, transportation, and other areas of energy use in the next couple of months. Then we'll bring in community, the community to talk with us, or we don't know what form that'll take. But I hope, you know, we will see the end in sight and then come up with some basic goals and plans, keeping in mind what's measurable and achievable, affordable, et cetera. So it's clear that the city and BPW have done a lot over the years to keep up with the changing science and the demands of a growing business and residential population. It's also clear that there's so much more to do with the changing science. We can do our part, too, by calling BPW and asking that our power be generated, the renewable energy credits be used for a fee, of course. So it's clear that we could all do more, and I think we'll be coming up with a strong vision and a way to achieve that vision. So be patient. I'm not very patient, but I'm trying to be patient. And we're doing our homework. Great people. And Scott, you've corroborated me in that statement before. These are intelligent, well-read, hard-working people who are on this team, and I thank them. And I thank all the people writing into it. It certainly takes a village or a city. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Nikki. Any other communications, motions, appointments from council members? Yes, Quincy?
Um, I'd be amiss if I didn't bring up or comment on me and Black History Month. As a black man, I love Black History Month. There's a lot to learn, even for me, about Black History Month. One of the things that I would, you know, so you just made the mention, Mayor, regarding someone wanting to know about the history of blacks in Holland and how they've contributed. I find myself in that category, being the first black person to be on city council. So I hold that very dear and near to my heart. Then also, in our everyday life, you know, one of the things, in my 20s, I seen this list of black inventors. And so I started looking on a daily basis during Black History Month, and I would look and see who invented and what. And there are a lot of black inventors who have invented things that we don't even think about. Super Soaker, that was, I don't remember the gentleman's name, Lonnie. I can't remember his last name, but he invented the Super Soaker. And when we think of summertime fun with squirt guns, that's him. Shirley Jackson invented the touch-tone phone. There's a list of things. Clothespins, folding chairs, ironing boards. There are so many everyday things for the Black community has been a part of. That's why I have been a part of our everyday. I would implore everyone to take the challenge of every day looking up a new inventor, or a black inventor in our society, who has contributed to life, our life.
It's a great idea. Thank you, Quincy. And that was the Super Soaker guy. I couldn't read the small text, but is that who that was? Very cool. Very cool. Any other communications, motions, appointments by council members? Seeing none, I've entertained one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Trethuie. There is support by Peters. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.